I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:01. And we can stand to say this.
We have a flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. I will take a motion to approve the agenda. One they can look at it after. Thank you. Liz, you said that?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Now, do we have any adjustments? Brian, I know you want to.
Yeah. One thing that normally when we do the setting the tuition rate, we do the choice numbers in, choice numbers out, and that, we didn't do that. So if we could do that tonight, that would be timely.
Okay, could we put it in right before the student support systems presentation?
Sure, should be quick.
And due to the fact we have a really long agenda, I'm suggesting that we, you know, came from suggestions that we put the board goals off to the next meeting because we really need to get, have some time with the superintendent search consultant that we have. Are there any other changes? Anybody? Nope. I don't see anybody online. Okay. Then I will ask for a vote with adding, looking at the student numbers that can come in and out of the district, and then taking out the board goals. Otherwise, the agenda as presented, please raise your hand if you approve of. Okay, Bruce is good too. Okay, we're all good then. So now we have public input and announcements, and I believe we have two speakers. Kristin Billings, you're up first. Oh, hi, Asha. I'm glad you came. Kristin, you have the floor. Oh, okay. I can come back to you if that's okay. Crystal, you're next.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, all. I hope you're safe and well with the COVID numbers. I would just like to begin tonight by welcoming you, Mr. Hill, to your new position. Whether it be an interim position, there's still a really great opportunity for both you and the district to lead us in the much-needed growth of positive change. And Brian, I really hope that you'll take the time to focus on our failing athletic program. Our community specifically, our athletes deserve better. I have been speaking at meetings for nearly two years now stating the same concerns, academics and athletics, and I feel unheard. Yet nothing has been added to the agenda or discussed. You are now in a position to make change, hold yourself accountable, and demand improvement. Demonstrate to the students that you care about all of them and their athletic abilities because they are feeling sorely misrepresented and undervalued. Time, take the time to talk with the athletes. We are pulling eighth graders to form varsity teams. This is a disservice to the athletes at all levels. Yesterday, I learned of two families that are considering alternative schooling next year to fulfill their children's athletic desires. I really urge you to take a look at the program and look at shaping it now. You know, it really can't wait much longer. On another note, I understand there's a new cell phone policy for the students in the high school and middle school, which I don't disagree with at all. I do think it's important to publicly share a response to a recent question asked during public comment in regards to the policy and procedures that are in place currently in the event there is a threat to the school. So that we know how things will be handled in that situation when our childrens don't have direct access to their phones, who are we making phone calls, and you know, how quickly they can access a phone. And lastly, going into election season, we remember last year elections grew contentious, unsettling accusations were made about candidates that were plainly untrue and unfair. I am hopeful all of our board members will remain respectful and professional towards all candidates over the next few months. And I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Crystal. Christine, does your mic work now?
She left him assuming an attempt to get it to.
Hi.
I know you're.
I'm on an actual phone.
Okay, well, then you have the floor. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you. Listen, I just wanted to bring forth an article I read in The Herald. It was on January 17, and it was "Family Hoop Ties in Fairhaven" by Tom Haley. I'm just going to read a little bit about it because it really hit home to me. Jay Wilson was a math teacher and a coach during the days that inclusion ran rampant within the walls of Mill River, and there was a waiting list to get in. And his quote in this article is the essence of why the student body felt so welcome and included. So that quote was, "When 1990 Mill River graduate Justin Smith scored his thousands points, there was no notification to the press about the possibility of this milestone occurring that night. When asked why, Coach Jay Wilson responded that it wasn't his style to promote individual accomplishments. It has always been about the team, the family, for the Wilsons. We were all included at Mill River, and it didn't divide us, that inclusion. In order to get this district unified and out of the trenches, this new superintendent must embody these skills of humility in putting the students' needs first and satisfying adult egos last. This person will need to be strong enough to make difficult and uncomfortable decisions amongst his peers to get the old Mill River mantra amongst the staff back. My understanding of this unspoken mantra was that every decision was made in relation to if the end result positively impacted the students. I ask you to please be humble, be methodical, ask the right questions, and look at every resume, not just the ones culled by the V S B A. And if necessary, do a private national search. Anticipate it will take a long time to find this person, and do not rush it, even if the search goes into the year 2023. This school has lost its way, in my opinion. Now let's get it back." And that's what I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Now, we have, I don't believe we have anybody else to speak, so I will turn it over to the board for discussion. I do want to clarify one thing. Christine, I don't remember whether it was, who attributed our choices to the V S B A. All we are doing is contracting through the V S B A for somebody to help us with the process because it's very involved and very long, and we have, in general, an inexperienced board. We can't turn all of that job over to the chair of the personnel committee and the chair of the board. I think we need somebody to help us, and actually Jackie Wilson just came up on screen. It is not the V S B A making choices in our district, just so that that's clear to everybody. Anybody else want to have any comments? Brian, do you want to?
If I.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, if I just might, just to follow up on what you said, later on tonight when we're talking about the process, I think one of the key things that caught my eye is that the members of the committee will all have access to school spring from the beginning. And I think that's a critical piece in terms of, you know, we're not, whoever's on the committee is not going to be given five out of, I don't know, let's say 30. The committee is going to be able to look at all 30. And then the committee, not the Vermont School Board Association, cuts it down from there. And I think that's important for the community to understand. While we are contracting with V S B A, and as Adrian said, there's nobody on the board that's been involved in a superintendent search, so asking them for their help, I think, is critical. Just one other thing, if I might, well, but you weren't on the search committee, right?
I was chair.
Oh, of the search committee?
The search committee.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not know that. So other than Doug Earl, and the only other comment I'd make is, I worked with Jay for years, Jay Wilson. The thing that always amazed me about him was, as a coach, he never, ever, ever called out a kid on the court. Never would he humiliate a student on the court. He would call him over to the bench and chew him out, but it wasn't done in public. And that's, I think that's kind of what's being said here is, you know, the way that was done and the way that Jay and his son, to this day over at Fair Haven, who was a student here, are conduct themselves, it's huge that they respect every single individual the same. And if we can find that in a superintendent, holy cow, that'd be great. That's all.
Anybody else? Jody?
I just wanted to quickly speak to Crystal's concern because I think it might be one that multiple parents would have, and I would, you know, defer to Tyler for a statement, but I do have knowledge that I'd like to share with her and anyone else concerned that students, if they have their cell phone in their bag or their pocket, they will not be asked to take that out. And so as long as it is put away, they will always have it on their person, and so they would have access to that if anything was needed during an emergency. If it is out, it will be put in an organizer right in that classroom. It will never be further than in the classroom with the students. So again, in an emergency, they would have quick access to it.
And I think adding to that, it's worth letting the parent community know with this cell phone shift, here's how we handle emergencies, and here's how notification would come so that you know what to expect, and if the phone rings, you don't ignore it. I think it's worth clarifying that. So we can, we can work on getting that out, not just at the board meeting tonight saying it, but getting something to parents formally.
Thank you. I don't disagree with the policy at all, so just to clarify that, my kids don't, to be honest, their phones in schools, certainly.
Yeah, thank you, Crystal.
Any other comments? Okay, as always, I don't always see everybody immediately because there's lots of places to look, so if I haven't called on you, please speak up or somebody else correct me. We now have approval of minutes. First set is, could we hold off and just discuss the minutes and then do a final approval at the end, just to shorten stuff up? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of 12:15, 21, 1:05, 20, 22, and 1:10, 20, 22? We'll discuss each separately. So moved, Adrian, this is Liz. Thank you. Is there a second? Thanks, Matt. Okay, now I will open it up to any changes or clarifications that the minutes need. Yes, Liz?
If I may, on 12:15.
Yep.
Which was working on the district goals. And this is just nitpicking, but Goal Six, under Board Goals Work Session, says Goal Six, which is the last goal, is complete, and Board will now, there should be a B in there, going back to modify, Goal Two is previously discussed. The only other thing I question, and maybe somebody can clarify it for me, it's, the last sentence in that same paragraph, it says, "Goals will be done ahead of town meeting." I don't think that was in agreement, it was sort of a statement. I don't know what that needs to be.
It was an aspiration.
I'm sorry?
It was an aspiration.
Okay, that's fine. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I like aspirations. Thank you, Liz.
Anyone else for any of the three sets of minutes?
No, but do we need to change that statement so it's less of an absolute statement and more of a, "We hope"? If it is going officially in the notes.
Yeah, just add, "We hope goals will be done ahead of town meeting."
Yeah, "we intend."
We intend, and district goals are not complete. We, the first draft.
Why don't we aspire?
We will aspire to have the goals done by town meeting, how's that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. If there's no other changes, I will call the question to approve the 12:15 minutes as amended and the 1:05 and 1:10 minutes as presented. Please raise your hand if you approve. There we have, one, two. Okay, thank you. We will move on to the Wallingford Open Seat Appointment. I have, I was in communication and sent notice to the Wallingford Select Board that we were going to be appointing tonight, and we agreed that I would send any, any interest onto them. They had their meeting last night, and they suggest that we, I received an email, and I'll read it. "The Select Board last night recommended appointing Maria French. Sincerely, Sandy Switzer." She did say, "Do you want a letter?", but I said that she's an email was fine. We don't have any, I hate to say it, but we don't have anybody else to consider, so.
Nobody else asked?
Nobody else asked.
Okay.
Maria very generously did ask and sent a very nice email saying that she would represent the town of Wallingford through town meeting if so appointed. So would anyone like to make a motion to appoint Maria as the? So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any further conversation or discussion or questions? Maria is green, so. Okay, nope. Then I will call the question. Will the, will Maria French be appointed to fill the open Wallingford seat until town meeting 2022? Please raise your hand if you are in approval. I don't know why I'm looking up at the screen. I've got a screen right in front of me. It's not sad. Okay. All right. Thank you. I don't see anybody that said no or was intending to not vote, so I will say that is unanimous. Maria, you're a full-fledged member of the board again.
Thanks, it's an honor to be back.
For a few weeks.
Your last possible choice, or your first possible choice. I, I'll take part until March, and I hope that, okay, yeah, thanks. I'll leave it at that.
All right. We now have to elect a vice chair. If anyone has a nomination, because Maria did fill that position when she withdrew from the board, that position is no longer filled, so. Adrian, I would like to nominate B.J. Behrendt. Okay. Is there a second for B.J.?
Oh, I'd say.
Oh, actually, we don't nominate. We don't do seconds, do we?
No.
Do we have any other nominations?
It's nominations.
Do we have any other nominations? I've never.
I would nominate Doug Earl.
Okay. Now we have to figure out how to do the vote. Are people comfortable voting in public, or do you want to send me emails as to your vote? And actually, are there any other nominations before I go there? Okay, hearing none.
Adrian, one question.
Yeah.
Bylaws require that if there's more than one individual running for a position, that you should use paper ballots as opposed to?
Well, we can't use paper ballots because we're not all here. That's why I was wondering whether we could send emails.
That's kind of like a paper ballot.
You think that suffices? I mean, I don't think we can follow that because of the pandemic.
Have we changed that? Is that how far they made it with the, with the bylaws?
I believe we were hung up on that one.
Yeah, I don't know if we even discussed the paper ballot piece, but.
No, we didn't get that far.
Yeah, so, I mean, it is an issue, but I don't think.
Is it one that we can kind of do a agreement, a vote on agreement of this is how we'll handle this vote?
Just for this particular?
That'd be the way to do it.
Why don't we vote by paper ballot, and the folks that are virtual can send you an email?
Okay.
How's that it?
So I will expect an email from Maria, and Sam, and Andrea, Bruce, Asha, and Liz. Am I missing anyone? Everybody else is here. Okay. And is everybody, oh, and Anne is already ripping up little pieces of paper, so we'll all be upset. So please send me your votes. Who can have a pencil? There you go. Brian, would you like to collect these? Actually, maybe I'll even turn over the votes. Okay, I have votes so far from Sam and Andrea. Oh, thank you. Oh, I meant for you to like keep. Refresh. Okay, here's Bruce. And Asha.
Mine's in there too.
Yep, here. Take mine. How was who won? Sorry.
No worries.
Just remember whose that is.
Well, I'll notice. Very well. No problem. Yeah, actually ahead of schedule, which is good because it frees up a few more minutes for.
I remember when we did the last one, the superintendent had something for 45 people.
Okay, I've got Asha, Maria, Bruce, Liz, Sam, Andrea, virtual, and then one, two, three, four, five in person. Do you want, do you want just the winner, or you want the tally?
Oh, you can just tell us the winner, I think.
Okay.
Unless anybody cares.
B.J.
Okay.
Congratulations, B.J.
Oh, I guess. And.
Congratulations. Four and seven.
Congratulations, B.J.
Yeah, congratulations.
Now I'll make sure I'm sick next time, so.
Thanks, Brian.
Yeah, thank you very much. When we did this at the V S B A, it was even more cumbersome.
That was the easiest thing I've done all week. Absolutely fine.
He did great.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm glad to hear that. We are now at the superintendent's search process, and I will turn over the conversation to Jackie, who has sent us a bunch of paperwork, has some questions for us prepped, so she can guide us through what she needs to know from us.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Maybe you want to introduce yourself for the community.
Sure. I'm Jackie Wilson, and I am thankfully a retired superintendent. I retired about a year and a half ago, so I only lived about, through about four months of COVID. But I was the superintendent for Bennington-Rutland Supervisory Union, and I spent most of my career there. I was in that, I started my life as a paraprofessional there and wore every single hat you could possibly wear, a superintendent, and spent 28 years there and chilling out. So I have a pretty good sense of how the whole system works, and so I'm looking forward to this. I had a preliminary conversation with Len and Adrian, and so I've got, I've put together some materials for you, and I'm not sure if you've had a chance to look at them, but our, our goal tonight is to really get some agreement on a few things so we can get moving and get going. I would, you know, as I, I've put together, I want to say, I've put together a preliminary timeline, but of course, that, you always have to be flexible. We could get, you know, we could be in a place where we feel really great about the candidates that we have, and we could be in a place where we don't feel great about that, and so then we'll be changing that timeline. So, so there always has to be flexibility with that, and there'll be flexibility with adding or subtracting from that timeline. But there's some things I need some guidance from you on tonight. First, I'd like us to take a look at that process and timeline, make sure you're good with it. And then we have the charge of the screening committee, and I have put together a job description for you. And most importantly, I'm going to ask you some questions at the end because I need some information from you about what are you as a board looking for in that superintendent because I want to be able to post that in the job posting, and that will also help to inform the screening committee as we move forward. Okay?
Yep.
So Adrian, do you want to, I don't know if you want me to, I mean, I think there's some things, I'm not sure what your agenda says, I did not take a look at that. Are there things that you want to, you know, so you jump in anytime if there's things you want to take a vote on as we move through.
Okay, really, all that we had on the agenda was superintendent's search process with you leading that conversation, and then acting on the superintendent's search committee after that. So it's pretty, pretty open, open-ended.
Okay. All right, so I'll talk about the process and timeline, we'll answer any questions there. We can wrap the job description if there's any questions on that. And then, so was there a separate, separate motion for the screening committee charge, did you say?
We have not acted on that yet.
Okay.
This is the first meeting that we.
At least on your agenda, should we wrap that into the whole approval process, is what I'm saying.
We didn't specifically mention a charge, but the process is on there, and the superintendent's search committee is all that's there. So I think the charge easily fits under that heading.
Okay, great. All right, great. So I have a few, so I put together a process timeline for you, and starting, you know, right off, I think it was just a couple of days ago with Len and Adrian. So this week, there's quite a few things on your list for the week of 1/17, and we'll tackle most of those tonight. I will need, there's some, there's questions for me. We will somehow need to manage communications with your stakeholders, and that's usually done at the supervisory union level, so I'm not sure how to coordinate that, but I'll need some help with how you want to handle that, you know, what the board wants to do. But you should have, it's good to have a webpage and just let your community know what's going on, where you are in the process. And keep them informed. And I'm happy to provide some of the content for that, but I just need to know who's going to actually do that. Okay? So that's something we need to think about. So I guess I'll start first, looking through that, that timeline, do you have, I'm not going to go through every single thing on here, but do you have any questions? Does the timeline feel good? I mean, is that screening committee, is the first group gets together, they all have access to the candidates that come in, make a decision about who wants, they want to interview, and then some finalist candidates, those recommendations are made to the full board, and then the full board is involved in the hiring process. So I will help and assist the screening committee as they move through their work, and then I kind of transition and support the board as they move through their work, the full board, as you move through that interview process. So that's pretty much how it, how it works. And again, we'll have flexibility with, with the time, and that's, I want, I'll keep, you'll keep hearing me say that, but hopefully we can keep to this. I think it's a good timeline, hopefully we can keep to it, but I'm not positive that that will be the case.
Just to clarify, Jackie, in your timeline, you mentioned the screening committee, the cert, and the, is that what we are describing as the search committee?
Yes.
Okay, and then, and then you're just referring to it, the same group of people as committee throughout the rest of your?
That's correct.
I just wanted to clarify.
So the committee, and so they are, they are, with the timeline I've proposed, there are three times that that screening committee needs to meet, that search committee, they need to meet three times, and, and that's pretty early on, it's like starting next week and the next three weeks, you know, we need, we need to be and get a ton of work done, and then it transitions over to the full board.
Thank you. Yep.
Two things, Jackie, if you don't mind, this is Len Dusseth speaking. I really, really like your idea of a website. I think that, that's tremendous. And the second thing is, I appreciate the fact that we as, or whoever that committee is, is going to have access to school spring. And I think we need to talk about whether we do that, and I'll ask Brian because he's sitting right here, do we do that through Mill River's Unified Union School District, school spring account? So the folks who are on the committee would get that password so they can access that?
We should have no problem doing that. We should have no problem doing that, yeah.
Yeah, and you don't, you don't need to however, because VSB has, they have an account and they already, they already set me up and I invite anybody who I want to to that.
Okay.
Which I, I would recommend doing that then because that keeps it cleaner and then it's nothing that anybody here has access to, only the folks with the search committee will have access.
And, and I don't want access to your stuff.
Fair enough. I mean, we don't, because we may be hiring for other positions and that would all come up with that same password and that would really be appropriate.
And I don't want that. I just want to see, I want just a search, so I think it's cleaner and I'm ready to roll. I mean, once, once I know who's on that committee, I'll be able to send out invites, so then we'll have access to everything. So I already went and set that up yesterday, so we're in good shape.
Great.
So I wasn't sure, how, how much time are we leaving to have it on SchoolSpring? Just, just like a two, three week period?
Yeah, it's, it's almost three, it's like two and a half weeks and so, so here's my proposal and I got this because I spoke to a colleague who's involved in one right now and I really like this approach. So the ad, if you took a look at the ad, which was a very rough draft that I put together, but the ad says that it would be, we start to review resumes on February 11th. So that means, I mean, the messaging on that is, you know, if you want to be into, we're starting to look February 11th and then it's going to be open until filled. So I think that's nice because that gives us that flexibility. Our serious candidates, if they want the job, they're going to have it all in by February 11th and then it gives us some room to, if we're not happy, you know, we can go out and do some more push, you know, push for more candidates. So that's how that would work.
Does anybody else have questions? You guys all were mailed all that whole packet of stuff. I mean, right now we're just looking at the.
One of the questions was, should the job posting be on SchoolSpring only?
Right.
And, and I guess Jackie, I'd ask you, what you've seen, how does that work in the past? I mean, I don't know.
Well, again, I, I spoke to some of my colleagues about that and they, and that are currently in searches and they were recommending to stick with SchoolSpring. They said they had, one of them had done, had extended that to Ed Week, didn't get a whole lot back on that.
And it's quite expensive.
It's very expensive.
I remember from our last search, it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know.
I'm fine with that.
No, no, I was amazed at how expensive it was and plus you have to wait for it to, you know, publish, although now they're online, that was before there was a great online.
I mean, I would say if we don't have, if you don't, if, if we look at that and we're like, whoa, it's February 11th and we're not happy, then, then we do something else.
Hey Jackie, quick question on that one. I know SchoolSpring is very, very popular in Vermont and is available in other states. How is it, I mean, I just don't want to miss out on an opportunity from an out of state person applying just because their state doesn't use SchoolSpring as much.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question and I can, you know, I'll, I'll check with a couple of my colleagues to see if there's something, you know, is it the availability of, for other states accessing SchoolSpring? I know when you go on it, it lists every single state, but I, but I'm not sure if every state still, if that's the go-to place or do we need to put it on indeed, you know, is there another place for teachers? But I'll, I'll research that for you.
Can I interrupt? This is Liz Philsco. BJ, the school at which I work, we just hired someone from Oregon through SchoolSpring.
Well, I know there's some states that use it quite a bit, but I also think there's some other states who don't. Like even New York State, I know someone who applied out there and they had a completely different process for school hires.
I mean, it has been my experience of when I was a superintendent and I advertised for lots of jobs. I would get applicants from all over the country, all over the world.
I'm just posing the question.
We had the same experience when we hired the last time for, for superintendent. We had, we had job applicants from outside of the country and I was amazed at the, at the breadth of, of geography that was represented.
Is that all you used the last time, SchoolSpring? Do you remember?
We did some local stuff, but SchoolSpring is what actually gave us the people to live there.
We might have put something in the Herald or maybe one of the Burlington papers. Or maybe it was Boston. I don't, I honestly don't remember, but we talked about it. But there was, the applicants came from SchoolSpring.
I think we'd leave, in my opinion, we'd leave it there until.
I like the idea of like if we revisit it if we need to extend the search. We revisit this conversation, but stick it with SchoolSpring. I've been always happy with them so far.
No, I think you're right. I mean, certainly it's a good place to start.
So are we good there? Then I'll, I'll ask where we'll go and unless we find out we don't have the candidates that we just.
I think that sounds agreeable to everybody.
Yep.
The other question I had on the, on, on my notes for this week, I did, I wanted to ask you, again, speaking to some of my colleagues, they had run like a one hour community stakeholder virtual session with the consultant and the, the chair of the board and it was just, you know, pretty similar, you know, to what do you want in a superintendent? What are you thinking, you know, would be good for our community? And I don't know if you want to do something like that or not, but if we wanted to do something like that, we'd want to do it, I think, in the next couple of weeks. So I just wanted to check in with you to see if there was interest in doing.
I, I think it's a great idea and, and I think you probably have, you know, more than, you know, a few board members sit in to listen.
Yeah, not to jump, but we do need to somewhat reschedule a community conversation because the January one did not happen. So perhaps either rescheduling of it and the topic for it.
Okay, so when do you usually have those Samantha?
Those are usually Mondays from 6:30 to 7:30, but if we needed to adjust this one, I'm sure.
Okay.
I mean, we could make it longer than, you know.
Oh, definitely, yeah. Just this would be a great, you know, peanut butter getting.
No, I think that, that timeframe works, I think. I mean, it's not, it's not a big meeting night for, for any board stuff other than the community.
The third Monday?
So it would have been the 17th, but it could be this next Monday. I mean, what, whatever is decided, we, we'd have to announce it regardless, so.
I was thinking maybe the week of the 31st because that gives us a couple of weeks to, you know, to get a few other chunks of work done. So that's two weeks from now? Yeah.
That sounds great. Do you want to do?
And it's before we start reviewing resumes.
Correct, correct.
That works, I think.
That works for me.
6:30 go is what we traditionally do. Will that work, do we think?
6:30.
And we can leave it maybe even open ended-ish or extended, I mean, usually it's 6:30 to 7:30. Would we want to go till 8? I know at some point people need to start thinking about that time, but.
I mean, we could schedule it till 8 and if everything sort of peters out, then you just, you know. Or, or go till seven, say it's from 6:30 to 7:30 and if people are still contributing, we could.
Maybe 6 to 7:30 might be a slightly easier for parents.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's all great. And then if people want to hang around under the streetlight until 8 o'clock, maybe they can, but.
The virtual streetlight.
Indeed.
Yes. Okay, so.
Well, and you could say 6:30 to 7:30 or until all community members are heard.
Well, I think Liz was suggesting starting at 6 to even give us a little more time before it gets late. Does that work? Does that work for everybody? So we're talking 1, 1:31? Was that, and, and at 6 o'clock?
And also some folks, what we usually do for the community conversations, but tweaked for this topic, if that's cool with folks, and I'll include you on that as well.
So I'll put that on our agenda for our first screening committee meeting to make sure we've got all that locked down with all the details and everything, so.
Do you think it's, it's locked down enough to have us put it on the board calendar and the academic calendar?
Sure, sure.
So we can do that in and.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll just, just plan a little bit about what questions do we want to ask.
Okay.
Do we have any norms for that meeting on the job? Would be important. So that's for 1:31.
Whoever's here, spread it around because we won't have another board meeting in June. So January 31st will be time to, and we'll make sure it goes out to, into the schools and we'll try and, and put it on front porch forum and, and make sure that, that people know about it.
Then we have a board meeting 2/2/22.
Yes, we do. Definitely. It's very close after.
And that would be the best place for the community to provide input for this, to the steering committee?
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then there will be, you know, tasks for community members to take part in, in the interview process later down on the, in the process.
So I am still back to, I'm gonna, gonna harp you a little bit, that whole having a place on your website, on the, on the district's website to just keep the community and, you know, that would be a place where this meeting would say, hey, come join us for this. So I don't know how we want to facilitate that, but if you can put me in touch with somebody who might be in charge of that.
And me.
Our, our interim superintendent was our, our IT and, and technology person, so.
I'll, I'll cover that Jackie, so I, I can.
Who was saying, I can't see who's Brian, Brian then. Okay, so Brian, I'll, I'll connect with you about that.
Yep.
And Brian.
And I'll throw something.
Be involved with that one too, because you have a lot on your plate right now, so that is something I definitely will help out with.
Appreciate it and, and I'm thinking we can just put a nice big headline on the front of the district page where we have our COVID stuff, that there'll be a superintendent's search.
So it's a little bit more editable by those other people.
Cool.
Hi Jackie, so.
Hi.
How can I proceed?
Okay, great. So, yeah, and it's, and I should have, this was not too smart of me. I should have put my email right on the top of this somewhere so you all know how to get ahold of me because it's easier for, for you all know each other. It's easier for you to probably reach out to me and then we'll all have each other's emails. It would be great. So my email, I will, Adrian, I guess work through you on that and make sure all the board has it?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, great.
And I'll send you everybody's email.
Great. Perfect. So let me see. Any other questions about the timeline?
I don't, I think it, it seems, you know, it's compressed, but I think there's no reason to, to not act quickly.
Yeah.
And there's an awful lot of superintendent positions that are open.
Right.
Right now.
So let's move on to the screening committee chart. And I've outlined in that, you know, this is traditionally what the screening committee does do for the board in bringing them finalist candidates. And again, I'm not going to read through this for you, but I just wanted to check to make sure, you know, that you're good with that screening committee membership. Again, that came out of a conversation with Len and Adrian and we thought that sounded manageable and represented the groups that needed to be represented. So Andy, do you have any questions about that?
Does everybody have it available to look at? I have a copy sitting here if anybody needs it in print.
Yeah, I got a question. What do you mean by exactly, by support staff? Who, who makes up support staff?
Well, I'm not, I wouldn't know if I can answer that question, I'll let Adrian.
I think when Len and I were talking about it, we were thinking of people that fall under the support staff contract.
Which is?
Secretaries, paraeducators, bus drivers, anybody who's not a licensed individual who works for the district, basically. Did I miss somebody that you think we should, I, I, to tell you the truth, I don't think I've had anybody from the support staff asked to, who are, I don't know, Anne, do you fall under support staff?
I'm a support staff, but I'm not a member of the union.
I don't think, it doesn't have to be a union member.
No.
That's not. Yes, I did. I mean, I, I was just looking through to see who, who was there. Yeah, I think basically non, non-licensed employees, I think fills that.
Adrian and Brian, are our, are employee contracts on the district's website page?
You mean the actual master agreement?
Master agreements are available for staff and faculty. I don't think they're available for public.
Okay.
I mean, they can, if somebody requests it, they can have it. I just don't think we post it.
I was just wondering in terms of, you know, referring Bruce to something on the website.
Uh, he, board members can access that because you have school emails, so that, that's available to.
But I think in terms of this process, non-licensed people would be considered support staff. I mean, that was sort of my, Len, do you agree?
Yes, I'm, I'm nodding. I know people can't see that, but.
I could though.
I was nodding. They might have thought I was sleeping, but no.
Go ahead. I was just going to ask.
My question is, when in the process do we plug in community members? Is it after this committee has called the herd? Sorry if that's a little crude, but I don't know any other way to say it. You know, if we, of course, we'll get at least 30 applicants for the position and so we don't need to involve community, and again, I, I don't know. Do we wait until this committee shrinks it down to five and then we involve the community? I, I'm not sure exactly Jackie, how that works and that's a general question.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think if you're looking, I would suggest if you want a community voice in on selecting your finalist candidates that will go to the board, they should be part of the screening committee. Because I think it will be hard to manage a whole separate operation from that screening committee. What I did put on the timeline was that the week of 3/7/22, after those final candidates have been recommended to the board, I think it would be important to somehow invite, so say you end up with three, say we're lucky enough to have three really solid finalists that we want, then I think you do name publicly those finalists on. I think that then it would be, it would be smart to invite those, the public or other stakeholders to meet those final candidates before the final selection.
Where is that on the process and timeline?
3/7.
3/7.
Oh, okay.
Jackie, in, in times past and in this district, we have done all of the screening on that initial, I mean, Doug, if, if you remember, if I'm remembering correctly, we didn't bring the public into it until those final three to five candidates were, were chosen and then we actually had different stakeholder groups interview them. So we had, we had students, we had community members, we had parents and we had different groups interviewing, you know, sort of in a round robin situation where, where they would meet with different groups of people all, all within that same day so that you had, you had varying.
We, we did that with the principal not too long ago.
Right. I think it's been a pretty common, at least in this district, way to handle it. So, so the board sort of, the board and the selection committee brought it to, to, to the finalists and then, you know, after, you know, because we have heard opinions in the, in this, in the forum on what we're looking for before we, before we go through that and then you have, you bring a, a significant number of the community in to, to do that final, you know, sort of meet and see whether or not the candidate meshes with those different groups.
If I may, we could also take the March community conversation if we need to schedule it in a time just for folks and maybe that's a way that they can come and just speak generally. I don't, you know, if they can't make all of the things or what have you, that could be the topic for that month as well.
Sure.
So, so let's look at that. I'm seeing my screen looks frozen to me, though I can hear you and I just look like a face, but can, can, am I frozen?
You're doing well. No, you're not frozen.
We can hear you, that's fine.
Frozen to me, so. So sure, let's do that week. We can do that whole process, you know, with the different groups that can have an opportunity to meet and interview those candidates and then I think that's a great idea, so we can also the public another digital, so it can get public, you know, wider, wider umbrella on all of that. Okay, so I've added that to my notes. We'll make sure that happens then.
Okay. Okay.
Is there anything else I need from you? I will need, have you discussed, and you may not want to do this here, but at some point, we're going to, I'm gonna need to know that salary range.
Yep. I think we probably are gonna address that in the next Personnel Committee meeting.
Okay.
Yep.
And again, I have lost my internet connection, but I still hear you, so I don't know what's going on.
Okay, we see you, and we see you moving, so I think it's just on your end.
As soon as I lost it, but.
Yep. Well.
Let me know if I'm not here. Okay, I'm just looking at, to make sure we've got everything. Oh, so Adrian, did you, I know you were going to do some outreach to see if there's interest for people for that screening committee, did you have any luck with that?
I've gotten a fair amount of interest. We probably have a few more people than we.
Our internet actually.
I think we lost her.
Oh, we did, finally. Okay, well, for everybody else, I did get people interested. I haven't really gone through it, and I don't know if I should just say the names and see whether they fit into the committee membership that we have outlined. Karen McCullough, Wendy Savory, Len, Anne DeJus, Maureen Fitzgerald. I don't have her home name, I'm assuming that's. Jody, Coral, BJ, and Justin Walker. So I haven't tried to fit in, I'm also interested.
Yeah, I'm interested as well. If it is not available.
I'm interested also.
Okay, well, we will have to whittle down the board members then, because we have. Okay, so tell me if I'm missing anybody. For board members showing interest, we have Bruce, Matt, BJ, Len, and Adrian. Was there anybody else that was interested? Okay, and then, building administrators would be, I don't know how that quite fits, Maureen. And if we don't have the exact balance, because we don't have the people, I guess that's what we have. Central office staff, would Justin be considered a teacher or a central office staff?
Good question, I.
He's an assistant staff.
Yeah, so he fits a little more in the under.
He does work summers.
Education contract, yeah, yeah.
What does Justin do?
A school psychologist. I think.
We also have Karen McCullough, who would fall into that category.
Yeah, library media.
You are, hi. We were just going through the candidates that we.
Sorry about that, don't know what happened.
Oh, I got, I had to rejoin too, so.
Can you hear me now?
We can. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, good. So if other people would like to still.
Adrian?
Yes? Jackie, we are here, but I'm not sure you are.
Samantha?
Nope. We are hearing you.
Okay.
But we're gonna keep talking about the makeup. Okay, if everybody heard all the names that I had. We have more people than we are interested, that I think that we can handle. Central office staff would be Jody and Coral. Okay, so what I have written down here so far is, we are interested in having three board members, but we have five who are interested. We have two, well, we're hoping to have two building administrators, we only have one on the list. And who is.
Can you hear me now?
We can, can you hear us?
Back.
Oh, good, okay.
I don't hear what happened there, but.
Well, I had gotten knocked off earlier too, so I don't know, I think there's just internet gremlins. But we've been talking about the people that have expressed interest.
Are we good to go?
Well, not exactly, we have more board members than we have space, we are missing a building administrator. Yep.
So Hayden.
I can't hear any of you.
Okay, I think.
Hayden.
Maybe, hold on a second, Bruce, Jackie, could you call in, maybe? Okay, Bruce, go ahead.
If she can't hear you, it's probably best to put it in the chat for her to read.
Oh. That's a good idea, would somebody do that?
Yeah.
Because I seem to have, well, no, I'm still here, but I guess on the screen. I do love hybrid meetings, I just love them.
Welcome to Google Meet, enter the meeting pin followed by the pound key.
Oh, she's calling in.
Your call will be connected when you enter the pin followed by the pound key.
Ken, you had your hand up, did you have a suggestion?
Me?
No, Ken had, was waving his hand.
Your call will be connected when you enter the pin followed by the pound key.
Bruce, did you have a comment that you wanted to make to the general, in amongst all this confusion?
I had a question.
Okay, go ahead.
The question was, how did you generate this list of people?
I sent out a notice that we were searching, we were expecting, we wanted names for people that were interested in being on the search committee, and it went out to all staff and all board members.
Yeah, I don't remember getting it, that's why.
Well, I'm sorry, I mean, I'm assuming. I don't know how to mute anybody.
I got it.
Okay.
Yeah, I got it too.
But that is, those were people that expressed interest from that solicitation. So I will take some board suggestions on how to, we could fit in another board member, because we only have one building administrator. We have also two people that could fit the teacher role. Comments, people? We wanted to end up with about nine, which is a workable number, but we could certainly.
I would be willing not to participate, assuming, because I may not be here, and I don't know.
Ooh, what do you think about that?
If you're gonna be able to do things remotely, et cetera, et cetera. So, but I think it's imperative that a member of the Personnel Committee be involved in the process. So I'm willing to step down, are you on the?
I'm on the Personnel Committee.
Okay.
I'm more than willing to help out with that webpage, so that's not on our, you know, interim superintendent who's doing two jobs already.
Yeah, yeah.
And Bruce, Bruce is also on the Personnel Committee.
Okay, then, that's fine with me.
And so is Matt.
And so, okay, well, the Personnel Committee is well represented, so you don't need me there. But, and I guess the only other thing I'd say is, and I don't know how to say this, but I'm up for reelection, so it may not matter.
It may not.
You're up for reelection, so that may not matter.
We won't be on the committee anymore.
Right, and that makes it easy.
Couple locals, Bob.
But I just wanted to, I'm willing to step back and let other folks take over, as long as they guarantee that they stay in touch with me. If I get reelected.
Okay, I missed.
So cross my name out.
Okay, I missed Wendy Savory, she also was interested.
She's a teacher.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, I was just trying to count my numbers, and so we have 11 people who are interested, after you've dropped out, if we take everybody.
You can pull my, you can pull my name out, it's fine.
You sure?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
There's, that's a lot of people to try to get together all, it's fine.
Well, I mean, you might not, so if that's true, let me read what I have now. We have three board members, Bruce, BJ, and Adrian. Am I missing anybody that expressed interest? Okay. Building administrators, only Maureen expressed interest, so I mean, that's what it is. Two central office staff would be Jody and Coral. We have three teachers that are interested, and I, I mean, looking at the overall numbers, I'm having a problem with that. And one support staff person. I would have liked to have a teacher from the lower grades, these are all people at Mill River, which isn't perfect, but I mean, it is what it is. So that leaves us one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 people, and we were hoping for nine. So I think that's fine. Does anybody have any objections?
The only thing I would ask is.
Yep.
I'm concerned that we only have one administrator, and we're hiring the person that's gonna be the direct supervisor to the administrators.
Well, we have central office staff too.
Okay.
They're directly underneath, so there's three people that would work directly underneath the superintendent.
I just wanna put that out there, just as a conversational piece. Is one administrator for a superintendent search, and maybe this is to Jackie, is one administrator for a superintendent search a appropriate number?
Direct administrator.
Yeah, direct administrator.
I think that's, I think that'll be fine.
Okay, I just wanted to put it out there, because that.
I think we may want to think about, do we do, just do a quick session with the building principals to see, you know, maybe just a quick, you know, what are they interested in, and what do they care about for their new superintendent? I think that's, that's pretty important, so maybe we can do a quick session with them, add that in.
We need the elementary.
That's true, she does have that.
So that may make up for the fact that we don't have the elementary teacher represented.
Good point, that's a very good point. Okay, so we'll leave it then, Bruce, BJ, Adrian, Maureen, Jody, Coral, Justin, Karen McCullough, Wendy Savory, and Anne DeJus. And that's good? Are we okay? Okay, so we have our committee, Jackie.
So Adrian, can you get me that list, how do we want to do this?
Oh, I'll send it to you as soon as the meeting's over, with contact info, is that okay?
I can't hear anybody again.
Can somebody write to her in the chat, that will, I'll send all the addresses to her? Let's see. Okay, all right. Hopefully that's.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know if she.
Brian also sent it to the chat, so hopefully she'll.
Three of us did, so.
Three, good, I think she got it, if she got the chat.
I stopped writing.
Yeah. Okay, that's a little bit much, when there's that many people. I guess we have to.
Jackie, can you hear us in the phone?
I think if I use my phone, I'm sorry, I can, I can hear you.
Okay, that's fine, we sent a few things to you in the chat, I said I would send the list.
Okay, great.
I would send the list of people, and I just wanted to know if there was anything else that we needed to accomplish tonight to get us started.
No, but what I would like, so if you can send me that list, that's great, and then I will send out some dates to the committee, so we can find time to meet for the, you know, nail down those three meetings. The other thing I do need from everybody is, Adrian, I know you shared that Google Doc today with the three questions on it.
Yep.
And I would really love to have, that will not take people very long, it's just really, you know, the three questions, and it will greatly help me put the ad together, and will be a good guide for the screening committee. So if, I would really appreciate if all the board members could take a few minutes and fill that in, and get that to me tomorrow, I would really love to post the job by Friday, if I could.
I think that would be great, so.
Okay.
Do we all agree that we will get that, those questions answered? Jackie, because I mailed those out, or email goes out today.
Yes.
I just have one more question. The job description that you sent to us, Jackie, that doesn't match the job description we have in place. So is that.
So I wondered that, when we talked about, and that's fine, if you have another one, it's perfect. When we met last week, and you did, when you shared with me the evaluation system, and so I was kind of drawing from that, I didn't understand that you had one. So if you have a job description, send it my way, and that's perfect.
Anne, we, I know I've gotten a job description from you in the past, this was done in 2019. I think that's the last job description we did.
We'll find it.
Okay, I have it here.
It might be in Dave's stuff, if not, we can get it from Dave, he's still.
Yeah, and.
What are you looking for, I'm sorry?
The superintendent job description.
It's this.
I might be able to find it for you, you want a digital copy of that?
To be able to send to Jackie.
I'll try and turn it down.
I can send you her address, Brian.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I actually liked Jackie's better, because it was more detailed, but.
Well, we can address it in the Personnel Committee, you know, it's.
Mine's pretty boilerplate, it's just, it's got about everything in it, and I tried to take from the objective, when I looked at your board goals, and I was just trying to draw a few things from there.
Yeah.
Great, well, I guess we both learned from this one.
Brian, I thought it, he didn't.
So Jackie, do you need anything else from us tonight, or?
I don't, I'm great, thank you, and I apologize for my technology, I will, obvious, I've never had this happen to me before, but I will be sure that I am in person when I meet my meeting, the screening committee, I can't stand this.
It is frustrating.
Well, welcome to Mill River.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much for attending the meeting and helping us out, we really appreciate it.
Okay, I'll be in touch with folks in a day or two.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, bye bye.
Adrian, just, she didn't even upload this, the questions, what's the best way to get those to her? Is all of us editing, do we email you our answers?
I don't remember, I thought when I emailed it to everyone, it included who.
Everybody has edit access to this one doc, which I don't think is the best way to do it.
When you forwarded, again, it does have her email address on the forward, in the body of the email.
Okay, could, because I had sent something first, and then I realized that I should send the actual document.
Yeah, that second send has her email, her Gmail address.
We send her the answers directly?
Sure, I think that would be most helpful. I don't need to be the go-between.
Okay.
That doesn't.
Adrian, could you forward me all of these, please?
I can, because you weren't, you didn't get them, I will most.
No, because I shouldn't have, but now I can again.
This is true.
Brian, she needs to be re-added to the MRUUSD group.
I believe you might have re-added me already, because I'm already getting emails from friends.
That works.
Maybe, I don't know if you were ever taken off.
Yeah, we did, we did do that.
I was taken off.
Really? Oh, okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that also.
Thanks for the honesty.
That was nice, taking that one week break.
Yeah.
Two week break.
I hope you appreciated it, okay. So, we are down to student representative updates, our. Are, are students still here? I see Sydney and-
She is.
Chris is there, so, okay. Do you guys have anything that you would like to share or
make comment on? We would have added you to the agenda.
Um, no, we are trying to set up a time to meet with students individually and/or as a group that have concerns or wanna say what's been going good so far, or things just wanna bring up and see differently for their future. Speaking about younger kids, cuz I'm, I know, I'm a senior, I'm gonna be gone next year, and I wanna speak for those who have years left and what they wanna see. A couple ideas that were brought up is possibly wondering if we could open up the home ec room or wood shop. I'm, as, or speaking for a student's perspective, a lot of the kids that go to Mill River learn very well with hands-on and strive with stuff like that. There, I've spoken to a couple middle school students who do carpentry already, either if it's a family business or stuff they do with friends they know, and I feel like wood shop would help them pursue their dreams of what they wanna do or just want to go to school, whether it's during the flex blocks, Wednesdays and Thursdays, just twice a week, or actively becoming a class. I feel like that would be, I think that would be something good for the future, whether we try to set something up towards the end of second semester or next year. Um, I think that would be good. Um, there was something else. Um, I can't remember what it is, honestly. I was thinking about it the whole time.
Any?
Yeah, mainly the home ec and wood shop kids would like to have available for the future.
I actually, I heard that at the, that meeting that we had with, with kids when, when some of the board members came, and one of the big comments was that they wanted to see home ec and, and, and the wood shop available for use, and, and Brian is here nodding his head back and forth as he's thinking about it, so, well, I guess we'll continue that conversation.
We met, Jody, when did we meet? Yesterday with Tyler, and that was one of the things that came up in that meeting. It was the ESAR, um, what's, what's the other part of that?
Continuous Improvement Plan. The Continuous Improvement-
Yeah, the CPI, continuous, CIP, Continuous Improvement Plan, and the ESAR funds which we're getting from the feds. And one of the, just one of the things that came up was trying better to utilize that area for those students who excel in that, cuz we were talking about, you know, some students don't wanna do a, a whole year up at Stafford, but they would like to do a semester or whatever. So, we did talk about that, and, and that's something that the committee continued, will continue to look at. Am I right in recalling that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Does Mill River have any kind of, I mean, this is totally off-topic, any kind of relationship with the, the Makerspace type, the Mint, whatever they call it?
In Rockland?
Yeah.
We're Karen McCullough.
I know we have Karen, but I mean, do we have an actual official? I know we share-
We don't. We really focused a lot of our energy on, on getting Makerspace pieces here in our library and media area, and Karen does a lot of that similar work here on campus.
So maybe we could even consider that an extension of that activity, cuz certainly a wood shop and a kitchen is not, is not completely separated from that. Are there other comments from the, from the student reps?
Um, I did think of the other thing that was mentioned to me.
Okay.
A couple teachers, math teachers in particular, they were wondering if, uh, they don't really know, and I don't really know who to speak to about getting new smart boards, whether it's projectors or the smart boards themselves. Um, the, the high school math teachers, Mr. Little, Mr. Heflin, and Ms. Danner, um, they all, they use their smart board daily, and each one of them is, by, you can see it daily, just getting worse and worse. Ms. Danner's projector, projector doesn't work, um, and Mr. Little going bad, and they were wondering if there's some, some way they can get something newer or something that replaces it, and we don't, we don't know. What steps to take? I spoke to Ms. Thompson about it. Um, she is aware. She emailed them. I'm not sure what else, uh, she did.
I'll, I'll have our tech guys go and check those out. I do know they're actually looking at Danner's currently and trying to figure out what's going on there, so as they're aware, they'll look at those. You said Danner, Little, and Heflin?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. We can have our tech guys look at that, absolutely.
So you guys are gonna be the go-to people now for, for the teachers to get their stuff. Nice to know. Alright.
Thank you guys.
Okay, are, are you guys done, or, or do you need more time? You're good?
I have one question for you guys. Not that I really wanna bring up a source, I can- what's the student opinion of the new cellphone policy?
Um, my perspective-
I support the cellphone policy, but I'm just wondering what's the student perspective from that?
I, I gotta agree with Crystal Usher on this. I totally like it. I love the idea. I think it's brilliant. Um, and other students, a majority, they partially frown upon it, to put it nicely. They don't, they don't think it's right. They say that it shouldn't be allowed, but you can see over time the decline of grades and student activity happening in the classroom and more focused on their cell phones, and I see it in every class, even, even in study halls. Uh, there are kids who are very behind in classes, who are at a critical f- for failing the first semester, and they just sit on their cell phones and it's like they don't have a care in the world. So, this, I, I, I do agree with this plan personally, but I know there's many others who don't. It's, I don't know, I, I agree, I like it. I do agree with it.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Um, what do you think?
So, um, one of the, I have, one of my study halls is with a special educator, and she, I think she was talking to some other adult, and she was talking about the cellphone policy at, when I was next to her, and she said she does think, she totally agrees with it, and she, she tells kids to put their phones away, and they do, and when they do, she sees a difference in, um, just like work, so they were, actually do work. They like, don't go on their phones. If she sees them on their phone once, she says, she says put it away, they do. So they definitely see a difference. Um, so.
There is one concern I just thought about, and I think Crystal had mentioned it earlier and somebody, um, it's something worth to happen, uh, like, say, in emergency, whether it's inside the school or the student's family member needs their contact immediately about something. I've, uh, just kinda wondering how that would go down. Personally, I think it's been, I think it was three years ago, I had a house fire, and ever since then, I know if I get a message from my mom or something, I do, I will check it in class. I will admit just because it's one of those what-ifs situations for me all the time from my mom messaging me. It's, I'm like a full traumatic stress disorder with, with this, just because it's a lot of those stuff that happened, that I'm not really gonna get in with.
I, I will say, as a parent, if I text my daughter during school hours, I don't expect her to read it into the end, and if I need to get a hold of her during school hours, I would call the school. I'm assuming that is, and that's for me as a parent.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think that's probably the preferred method of contacting your student. Not that-
Alright.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you, guys. That, this was a, a good discussion. Thank you for sharing your opinions and the, and the student bodies. Um, but we're gonna move on. We have the added agenda item of, I don't know what the specific term was for the number of children allowed in and the number of children allowed out. Students, not children.
Yes, uh, school choice numbers in, school choice numbers out.
Thank you. I didn't write that down.
Yep. And there are some statutory language that points out what that can and can't be. In the past, we have always set that, not always, sorry, in the past several years, it has been forty students allowed in school choice and twenty-four students allowed out school choice, if that makes sense. So that would be the recommendation for this year. According to Stan, we, we haven't hit those numbers in the last several years. Those have been the numbers we've used, and we've been fairly safe with that. This year, for context, we're about nine or so in and nine or so out.
Um, is there any conversation about that, or should I just have the question called and we'll, we'll talk about it then?
Well, I'll make the motion-
Okay, thank you.
That we do that.
Forty, forty?
Yeah.
And, and-
Forty, forty out.
Okay. Alright, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Matt. Now, is there any further conversation? Cuz, I mean, as we don't really hit those numbers, I don't know, you know, there's, there's too much to talk about. Okay, I'll just call the question then. If you, um, we are voting to approve the school choice numbers that the school's required to set, and we are saying forty students in and twenty-four students out allowed. And if you agree with that, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you very much. Brian, I'm turning you to you again, or maybe it's Jody who's doing the student support systems presentation.
Yes, so I'm happy to introduce our presenters tonight. That's Annette Parrish, who is the Director of Collaborative Learning, and Stacy Fisk, who is our EST 504 attendance and multiple other things coordinator, just, and I'll be here to give you a short presentation just on the ways in which they're supporting systems to make sure that we are giving kids everything they need to succeed. Uh, so I'll turn it over. I don't know who wants to go first, maybe, uh, Annette, you wanna start? Thanks.
You have to admit yourself, though.
Yeah, I've got Annette walking around here. She hasn't been here the whole time until now. Well, thank you for allowing me to present tonight. Collaborative Learning is myself and my wonderful colleague Carolyn Gregory. She's new to collaborative learning this year. Formerly, we were self-help. Um, I would say that our classroom is an inclusive, safe environment, um, where we make it a priority to establish relationships with students and really look at all our students as, in a holistic lens. They're, they're our, they're our students. They're there to get their academic, support in their academics, but they're also citizens of the world. They have lives outside of school that impact their in-school learning. So we try to create a space where we really get to know the kids inside and out and make it safe for them to feel that they can be theirs, themselves. And at the beginning of the year, and, and pretty much, I guess, the, the beginning of the second semester, I'll talk about expectations so that we can maximize our learning time together. Um, I want them to be respectful, responsible, being prepared and put forth effort, their best effort, take responsibility for their actions, to be honest. Um, you know, help preserve a positive learning environment for themselves and others. Um, and an important thing, there are never any stupid questions, ever. Um, you know, because somebody else in the classroom may be thinking the same thing and be so relieved that somebody asked that question cuz they were embarrassed to do it. Um, I try to come up with classroom rules together with the students. We kinda mismatch getting the rules together for the classroom. Um, we provide one-on-one support, small group support, peer-to-peer support. Um, most, every child gets, student gets individualized detention, not detention, attention. We communicate with the parents, the content area teachers, admin, whoever we need to, to communicate with. Many of our students are on 504 EST plans, um, and even those that aren't, a lot of kids have executive functioning challenges, which involve paying attention, organizing, planning, prioritizing, starting tasks, staying focused on them to completion, understanding different points of view sometimes in the classroom, regulating their emotions, self-monitoring, monitoring, keeping track of what they're doing. Um, and we also help adapt their assignments, breaking them up into manageable pieces, because there's a lot of students that, if they say, oh my goodness, I've gotta do this, this, and this, how am I gonna get this done? And we break down the assignments in a, in a manageable piece. And, um, also, we try to work on some self-advocacy skills. Um, that's hard for a lot of kids, and we try to model them, and then, you know, after a while, they start, you know, getting that power. Many are very shy, but it's a good skill to have when you go through life. Um, we check assignments daily on Power School and Google Classroom, then check in during the day. We have snacks available if kids need them. Um, you know, in addition to our regular students, sometimes kids just pop by to say, hey, can you look at an assignment for me? And I would never, neither Carolyn and I would ever turn a kid away if they needed help with an assignment. So, that's basically, in a nutshell, what collaborative learning is. So, anyone have any questions?
Sounds like you're a really good mom to a lot of kids.
I do love them.
I know my, my son, Sam, absolutely took advantage of your program.
He did.
He did.
He did.
Possibly took advantage of the program.
It seems like that was a long time ago.
It was.
Alright, thank you to Annette. We'll pass it over to Stacy.
Well, thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to join you tonight. As Jody said, I am the EST coordinator as well as the 504 coordinator. I have been at Mill River for ten years. I've been the EST coordinator for six and the 504 coordinator for five. Um, I also lead the attendance committee, so Jody mentioned that as well, and for that, we're focusing on improving attendance and in order to identify students who could be in danger of truancy. So that's been a huge component of what we've been working on this year. So just a little background on education support teams. So for Mill River, our union, our Mill River Unified Union Staff Handbook outlines the following EST framework, which we follow based on Act 173 and Vermont AOE guidance. So just for some background, our framework states that all schools within the Mill River Unified Union School District utilize an education support team, EST process, in order to share student-related academic or social emotional concerns that impact student performance in school. Each EST is made up of other education professionals within the school who represent a variety of knowledge across various disciplines. The intent of the team is to brainstorm ways to address student needs. So I just wanted to share that as the background. For Mill River specifically, our education support team members include parents and students, of course, our principal, academic intervention coordinator, who is me, um, special education LEA team leader, two guidance counselors, the Mill River Unified Union School District nurse supervisor, our collaborative learning coordinator, and our academic support para-educator. So Annette and Carolyn both rotate in and out of our meetings so that they can both be at the table with us for each committee. Um, Jody, as our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Equity, also joins us, our school psychologist and the referring teacher or classroom teacher. So the EST process at Mill River is that we have teachers fill out a Google form to refer students, um, and they, they give us all pertinent information that we need. As a team, we meet once a month for about three hours. We try between eight and eleven in the morning. So the process is the team reviews the referral at the monthly meeting. The team identifies student strengths, needs, concerns, and the accommodations or interventions that will be provided. The team develops specific measurable goals within an eight-to-12 week timeframe, depending on the needs of the student, and the team reviews those goals at the scheduled review meeting date. The goals may be renewed if not met, or new goals are established. The goals may be renewed if not met, or new goals are established. Teachers are asked to provide data via the Google form. We have a Google form that I send out to teachers before the meeting so that they can give us some current data on the students before we meet again. So as far as 504 plans, the 504 referrals can be made by the EST. They can be made by parents or physicians. And for 504s, we had, we need to have appropriate documentation for students who have diagnosed disabilities as defined by the Individuals with Disabilities Act, so IDEA is what we refer to. And eligible students must meet criteria for a disability that limits immediate life functions such as learning, concentrating, thinking, et cetera, which of course are all the important things that they need to be able to do while in the school setting. So just some typical supports. Annette talked about collaborative learning. That is one of our big academic support blocks for students that we offer right now at the high school level. We also, you know, accommodations will include in-class additional academic support and intervention that's provided by the teachers. We use FlexBlock. Students don't always access FlexBlock themselves, so we will schedule them when needed if they need additional time with their teachers. So four academic support blocks. Right now, in the middle school, we have middle school study skills. We have writing intervention, reading intervention, Math Lab, social studies lab, science lab. We've had ELA lab. We are very fortunate at the middle school right now to have quite a few supports for students. And again, like I said, the high school collaborative learning. We also have remediation blocks in the high school. So students who need to recover proficiencies, we have ELA labs, social studies remediation, independent science, we have Math Lab. So we give our students plenty of opportunities to recover those proficiencies that they may not have met the first time through. We also have behavior plans through the guidance office with administrative support. We have social-emotional support through the guidance office, college or career counseling services through the guidance office, and home and school supports. Usually, that's a team effort between myself as the case manager and the guidance counselors. Just some data for you. The average number of students for EST referrals each year, between 50, 70 referrals in a given year. The average number of plans that we end up writing is between 30 and 50. It, it really tends to be more along the lines of 50, but this year, currently, right now, we have 22 with more referrals coming in. And especially now that we're ending the first semester, we'll be seeing some additional referrals for students who were not as quite, quite as successful as we would have liked them to have been in semester one. As far as 504 plans, we usually average about 30 students on 504 plans each year. And that's been, since I've been doing this, that's, that's been pretty routine. EST plans apply to this current school year. Sometimes we do extend those, but we always close them out at the end of the school year, and then if we need to, we reopen them the following year. And it's based on referrals that come from teachers. 504 plans follow students throughout their educational career, including college, and can also be accommodated within the workplace if it's appropriate and available. So that's the basis of our work, is just supporting students in every way that we can and supporting teachers as well. So that's why we have the additional support, because the bottom line is we want our students to be successful and, you know, be as, as supported and, like Annette said, feel safe, feel loved, know that we're there for them. And so that's the work that we continue to do every day. So if anybody has any questions, more than likely answer them.
I'd like to say thank you, Stacy. That was a great presentation and outlines your huge job.
Okay, thank you.
And Annette.
Yeah, thank you all.
The, the both of you do amazing work. Are there any other, other comments or, or questions from board members? I guess you were pretty complete in your presentation. Jody, is that what you have to?
Yeah, that's what I have.
Okay, that was great.
Just want to outline all the work that they're doing.
I, I think it's, it's wonderful to hear that kind of stuff because it really, people that, we don't always get people that are so directly involved in, in, in present, you know, in kids' present lives, so it's wonderful. We have the COVID dynamics update next.
I will try and keep that brief, but absolutely, if you have questions, ask them. A lot has changed in the last 20 days. Coming back to school, the first day back, and we had an interesting shift from quarantine 10 days to five days, and the changes have come pretty fast. The, the good news, I think, is that we are able to continue having school. And I think the guidance shift from the state has been following, following the research and following the professionals in the field and what they know about Omicron and how it's working through our communities, and how do we best respond to that and keep our schools open. The two main things that we're doing right now, contact tracing has shifted and, and we are not actually contact tracing anymore. We are notifying folks who have been in a classroom with a positive case. But the language of contact tracing, we're not doing all the work of calling and tracing, and that's really labor-intensive, really time-intensive. And actually, as of last Friday, we were having conversations about, were we going to be able to continue to do all that work with the hours in the day and the personnel that we have? That shift has happened, so now we are sending, say, a school community, Clarendon, for example, every Clarendon caregiver will get an email at the end of the day if there have been positive cases identified. So that's a big shift from the contact tracing to the full school notification. Do you have a question about that specifically, Maria?
No, I'm, that's just for the end of when you're done talking.
Okay, okay. No, no worries, no worries. So that's a big shift. Another big shift is testing. We have shifted from a test-to-stay program to a test-at-home program. And that was another piece that we were, we were getting ready to struggle to be able to do as case counts increased, and we've seen what the rest of the state has been seeing too. Our case numbers have gone, gone up a lot over the last two weeks. We were going to struggle to do test-to-stay. So that shift to test-at-home that just recently happened, and that shift in contact tracing and, and that going away, and having a new system of notifying if your, if your child was in a classroom with a positive case, those are our main, our main tasks based on the Agency of Education recommendations right now. So that's the work that we're doing, and that was the email that went out to the community on Monday, and there was an email on Friday, and then the previous Wednesday. So we've, we've had a couple of quick communications to folks. It's a lot to absorb when you look at all of the details. But, but if you tried to capture it in a nutshell, students are now testing at home if they need to test, and we're just giving that one communication at the end of the day to the school community if there are positive cases. Questions on that, Maria?
Thanks, thanks. Yeah, I, I mean, as a parent, over the last two weeks, I haven't been on the board, so I haven't received all those emails. I have received calls and emails.
Yep.
From Mill River about my students.
Yep.
And in each one, there's this encouragement to test.
Yep.
And yet, there's not a clear availability of tests, or there's a, there's another level of effort that's required that, for some people, is a lot easier than for other people as far as requesting that tests get sent home. And so I feel like that's, can you address that, of when that's going to become more of a real connection?
Yes, 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 yes.
Right now, it feels kind of imaginary.
Yeah. And at the elementary schools, it's a little easier because what we can do, say, we have a case Clarendon, well, we can, we can put tests in backpacks and send them home with kids. So you get the notification at the end of the day, and we've sent tests home with students that need them, if that makes sense. The high school is a little more challenging, and you're, you're not looking at a third-grade classroom, and you can just go into that classroom and get the students that need tests, tests. So we're asking, we're asking for them to seek out those tests, which is a little more challenging, so.
But we're also being told that, that every student should consider themselves a close contact.
Because when, when.
In many of the calls, which means that technically, every student should be, be tested at day five.
Well, unvaccinated students, I think, are the ones that we're concerned more about with, with testing in close contacts. Vaccinated students, we're still saying, if you don't have symptoms, then continue on, if that makes sense.
And, and test at day five.
Is recommended, and that's a, it's a, it, the, the Agency of Education has, has shifted the responsibility out of our hands, which is a really interesting move. And I think it lines up with the other shifts that they have made. They, they published a frequently asked questions recently, within the last couple of days, actually. And, and we have no authority to require that caregivers communicate with us about testing. So the, really, the responsibility is on caregivers at home to test when they need to test. And they are recommendations, not requirements, and we cannot, we cannot call up and ask and try and get that information from folks, which is a very big shift from a year ago, if that makes sense.
I appreciate that, and I, I don't want to belabor at the point.
Sure.
But I do a little bit. I, I feel like it's a stressful thing for parents to be getting these truancy phone calls.
Oh, yeah.
And, and it's also, like, just to get, it's, I appreciate the updates, but there needs to be a balance between.
Yep.
Updates and considering the level that everybody's at of concern.
Yep.
And so to say something is very concerning, but then say, well, you know, this is recommended, but you don't really have to, like, it's confusing for a lot of people, and I think it would be really nice to streamline that information or.
Yeah.
Figure out a way, like, for example, one of the districts in which I work has shifted, instead of announcing it to everyone all the time, there's a place that people can go look for that information.
Yeah, fair enough, fair enough.
And so then, for the people that aren't affected by it.
Yeah.
It is maybe such a.
Yeah.
Constant reminder that we're in this state of.
Yeah.
Semi-panic all the time.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that's an interesting idea. Yet, we've been, we've been following the recommendations from the AOE. So their recommendation is to communicate in a certain way, so we've been doing that. But we can definitely, we can definitely think about some other strategies for that, for sure.
Because it's just a stressful time for people at night. I feel like anything we can do.
Yeah.
To simplify the messages that we're getting out to people, the, the more secure our community is going to feel.
I hear you. And, and I had that conversation with our, with our nurse, with Amy, and, and we were struggling through, how can we simplify the message and not leave things out? You know, how can we make sure that folks don't hear the wrong message? You know, how, so if we make it, if we make it too simple, and, and, for example, this is just a conversation we had, if we have a body of an email that says bullet point, bullet point, bullet point, and then the full guidance document, are people going to go by the bullet points and never read the full guidance document? You know, that, those are the types of struggles that we're trying to sort through and figure out, like, how do, how do we do that? Because I, I, I struggle to read through all of those materials, you know, with everything else going on, to sit down and read through all those documents in one sitting. It takes a while. It does. It's a, it's a challenge and a struggle. I, I hear you. I worry that we're not communicating the best we can be, but we haven't found that balance yet of what's too little and what's too much. And, and we're definitely, definitely open to suggestions. I, I like that idea of a place to go. I, I wonder how folks would feel about that, if there are some folks who kind of rely on getting the email and, and don't feel they have time to go somewhere. You know, I can see pros and cons to that. But again, I welcome recommendations, and Amy and I talk a lot, so we can definitely rethink, you know, what's, what's the best way to communicate, for sure.
Thanks, Brian.
Yeah, yeah. And if, if you can email me some, if you wanted to show me what that other district was doing, send that to me, so I can look at it, if you don't mind, Maria.
No problem.
Other, yeah, what, what other questions do folks have? Because things have changed fast.
Not so much about this, I just, we're like a quick update on how callouts and subs, you know, staffing.
Yeah, staffing, I think our peak in staffing out was last week. We'll see. We do, our, our mountain schools have fared fairly well. Clarendon and Wallingford, I think, last week were their tough weeks. Subs, we, we still have subs coming in, believe it or not, but I think it's hard when you have, say, three classroom teachers out getting three solid subs in. I, I think a lot of times when we have, have support staff out, we're covering any way we can cover. Sometimes when we have teachers out, we have administrators jumping in and covering that classroom, believe it or not, because we can't get a sub and somebody's got to do it. Sometimes we're combining classrooms, so say, the 5-6 group, if attendance is low in 5-6, and the fifth or sixth grade teacher is out, you know, we're used to Shrewsbury or Tinmouth have that as a combined group. But for Wallingford, to put those students together because you don't have them all there, that's one way we've been dealing with that. It's been a challenge, and I think last week was probably our most challenging week. Feedback I had from principals on Friday was things were looking good for this week because we, we really did have a conversation last week or end, can we maintain all of this? On the health office end, can we maintain all the, all the work to follow the guidelines? And on the classroom end, do we have enough bodies in the classroom? We, we, I think, snuck by just barely because there was a big guidance change on Friday. Does that, does that answer that?
Yeah, I just know that's a, a large, that's part of the issues.
Yeah, we're, we're really hoping that things start turning around and the numbers across the state look like they kind of are. I'm, I'm hopeful that the next few weeks, things will continue to get a little better, and we will have gotten through it, but we'll, we'll see. What, what other questions?
Lynn, did you have a question before? Or, okay, I wasn't sure if you'd had your hand up. Well, it sounds like we're doing the best we can.
We're, we're making it.
I'm just very happy that we're staying open.
Yep.
Thank you to everybody, because I know it's a struggle. If there's no other comments or questions, then we will move on to an item called Review of Committee Membership and Quorum Numbers. Now, we had asked for that at the last meeting, so it's on the agenda. And I'm going to ask board members, I mean, I can read what I have, which was, I believe, Ann's latest thing, but I don't know how much we want, how much time we want to spend on this. We're getting awfully close to town meeting and redoing all these things. But I can read through what we have, and if we need to adjust stuff, we can. I know there was a conversation as to whether or not we wanted to adjust the quorum numbers, but I don't know if we want to get into that tonight. But I can start with finance. We have Philsco, Carroll, Earl, and Raymond. Buildings and grounds is Earl, Gausberg, and Morton. Policy, Barant, Carroll, Doucette, French, Morton, and Hawkins. And Maria, I'm just leaving you where you have been, so, I mean, you don't have to stay there, obviously. Personnel, Doucette, Barant, French, Gausberg, Morton. Negotiations, Raymond, Green, and Gausberg. Am I saying your name right?
Your name.
Okay. Community engagement is French, Carroll, Philsco, Green, Raymond, Doucette. And that's what we have for.
What was that last one?
Um, community, oh, that's true. You had quit community engagement, hadn't you?
I resigned, yes.
Okay, yes. Sorry, not quit, you resigned. I hadn't.
Adrian, I'm not at, this is Andrea, I'm not added to Personnel. I'm on Personnel and Policy.
Perfect. I will add you, and I don't know if I don't have the most up-to-date list, but I do now. Thanks, Andrea. Does anybody else know, you know, think that they should be on something or should not be on something that I just read out?
Yeah, I'm on Personnel.
Okay.
Adrian, I had to step away. Is there a document you can share with us so we can look at it?
Um, Ann had sent this out, I don't know, ages ago, so.
It's on the district website, too.
And I guess it's on the district website, but not, not with these corrections.
Yeah. So I'd like to see your corrections, too, so I can get them fixed.
I always check the website.
I couldn't write fast enough.
Okay, all right. Actually, the only things that I corrected were Doucette not on community engagement and add to Personnel, Hawkins, and Earl. and Add to Personnel, Hawkins, and Earl.
I, I, my only comment would be, I think, after the elections, and when we restructure, I mean, some committees have five or six
Yep.
Some have three
Yep.
And that makes the quorum piece different.
It does.
And
And it sounded, and, and I have to do some more research, that we can actually set a quorum number without it being half of the committee, but I have to
I don't know.
I know, I have to research that a little bit more, but it seemed like that was some language that I read, that might make it easier for committees that have bigger numbers, but don't always have everybody attend.
Yeah.
You know, for whatever reason.
I was, if we can do that, I'm looking at the recommendation of two committee members make up a quorum, irregardless of the committee size. I'm spacing that off with Policy, it's one of the bigger groups of people, which sometimes makes it harder to actually
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
But I think two, at least having two people there is good, I don't know.
I will investigate that very question.
Okay.
That, that sounds good to me, yeah.
Yeah, because we could actually still function.
Exactly.
No, I think it's, it's true, because everybody has, you know, we're on multiple committees, we're, we all have lives, you know, we can't make it to every meeting, although, you know, that's the expectations that you try. But I think that's a good idea, Len, we should address this, if we're here. Okay, if
And which ones are you on, just out of curiosity, officially?
Finance, Community Engagement
Negotiations.
And negotiations.
Okay. As Chair, I was just trying to
Yep. Cool. Um, I thought I was on Policy, but I'm not, so, I will, I'll join if I'm, if I'm here. Next time. Okay, we had decided not to address Board Goals, so we have Committee Business, Committee Business Reports, and we will start with Personnel.
Well, that's wonderful.
Glad you're happy.
Yeah, our next meeting, we don't have any contracts or anything to present, any action needed, our next meeting is two-two-twenty-two.
That's fun.
Yeah, that's kind of cool. We will need, I would like an executive session later around contracts, and, but I just throw that out there. And Brian, you wanted to
Yeah, yeah, so the two things that I was thinking about, we do have some administrator contracts that are up this year, so we need to look at those.
Are we talking tonight, or the next Personnel meeting?
The next Personnel meeting.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Two-two.
Okay, all right, okay.
And then, we had discussed at the last full Board meeting, when I was appointed, we had talked about setting some sort of chain of command and figuring out some of those pieces, so I'd like to have a proposal at Personnel first, so that we can, we can start that conversation now, if that makes sense.
Brian and I
Yep.
I actually had it on my list of things, because we had, back a while, I'm saying probably three years ago, we had the list of administrators, and some folks had two-year contracts, some folks had one, and they were staggered, so we weren't looking at renewing contracts for everybody the same year. And I don't know where that's at, and so that's one of the things that
We also have to discuss a superintendent salary.
Say that again?
Superintendent salary for the, for, for the job description and, and our search.
Oh, I got it right here. Well, I have numbers.
Okay, no, but I meant, I
Yes.
We have to discuss that at the next Personnel meeting, too.
And I'll bring the, I'll do the research to figure out where all the admin contracts are, and bring that.
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great. So that's for our next meeting in February.
Cool, on two-two-two? Two. Two-two-two. Policy update.
Okay, um, again, we got to talk about the community participation at Board Meetings, Policy. We started wordsmithing, one that Bruce was very kind to kind of take all of our ideas and every bit of information we've had, and kind of put it into one little thing, so I think we had a very productive meeting, I was looking forward to it. Really, really hoping we can finish that up and get that signed off next meeting. Just kind of a quick little reminder for the two admins in here, I, one of the things I want to review in February is that list of policies and when, and the rotation, so if we can find that, or get David to give it to somebody.
Yeah, I've got it, I'll send it to you.
You've got it, okay, good.
Um
Because I think a quick review of that, because we've done a lot of little one-offs, and I want to get back into that rotation. Actually, want to start that rotation?
Well
It's been hard to get to.
Yep.
Um, other than that, our next meeting is, as always, the second Tuesday of the month at 5:30, which is going to be February 8th.
Wow.
So
Okay. Buildings and Grounds, do you guys have anything to report?
Couple things. Um, my, my best part of this is the buses are here
Oh, nice.
By the way, the last one came in last week, I believe they've both been lettered now. Had a conversation with, with Deputy Hoffman, and he said the best thing he likes about the new buses is they have rear cameras. Says the cameras are outside of the bus, he says I can now back up without worrying about running somebody over. They were supposed to be, they were ordered with interior cameras, so they can go, he can see what's going on everywhere. They didn't show up, but they're going to be coming on Friday with, with the equipment, they're going to be putting that on for us that are there. Everything else, I had him dancing, or he had himself dancing, moving cars, we were putting wood chips in the, in the container, so I didn't really chance to call, to talk to him at all, he was everywhere else that I was going through, but the buses are here, Lord, the buses are here.
That's good.
Actually, I have a question about that one. Backup cameras, should we consider putting that in the other buses, like an aftermarket one?
Sort of surprised we don't have them.
It shouldn't be that terribly expensive.
I, I'm just thinking, I mean, I know that's like a safety thing, you can't, you can't even buy a car without it now, and I know it's not crazy aftermarket.
I mean, for buses, you really should have one in the front, too.
Well, there was a, a look to that, but one thing that Deputy Hoffman said to me, and it makes sense, is that the, the front of the thing from where the driver sits to the front of the bumper on the vehicles that they have are a lot shorter than the ones that they used to have. So they're basically looking over about a three-foot, two-and-a-half, three-foot space instead of seven.
Other than the very small kits, but you just have to keep track.
Yeah, a lot of them used to come with just, with big round mirrors, they'd put it on the side, and you could actually see if you're getting close to a parked car, that's the better way to go there. We'll see, I'll, I'll have Gary look at it and see what happens, anyways.
Great, great news. Um, Community Engagement.
Uh, well, Sam, first, that'll news with, sorry, my internet is not happy, so I apologize, I'm going to try and do this quick and to the point. With Maria bowing out, I was selected the new Chair of Community Engagement, so thank you all. And with that, our next meeting is Tuesday, the 8th of February at 6:30, mark your calendars. We will, at that point, have a draft of the survey that we hope to present to you all at the next Board Meeting, that we intend to give out to the, anyone we would include in that Mill River community. So we're hoping that we will have that set to go. I'm excited that the Community Conversations will turn into slightly one step more formal born meetings, because I assume the attendance is going to be very excited for those two superintendent-flavored versions, but we will still have the February one as scheduled, and I think we don't have, let me just remind folks, that one is myself, Len, and Adrianne, February 21st, virtual. That one will be more popcorn-style, I suppose, with the two flanking ones about the superintendent. We will then, that actually really graciously gives us all a bit of a grace period till after town meeting day, I believe, until we need to sign up for our next Community Conversations for the rest of the month, so I will start taking on that beautiful nudge poke of an email to y'all, unless you get to me first and tell me which months you would like to sign up for, and
Sorry, Sam.
Please.
There are people signed up for the rest of the year, and I will share that with you.
Hot dog, thank y'all.
Yes.
What good news.
Sorry, I missed.
That is the greatest kind of interrupting. Oh, very good interrupting, I'll take data anytime. And then we also had a conversation about how to increase conversation and phone updates coming from our schools into our communities, in addition to and supplementing the emails that families get, for example, from principals, so looking forward to updating you all on that wonderful stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sam, what, what time is the 21st, is it 6:30?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Sam, thank you for taking that on, that's great. Negotiations, the only thing I have to report specifically is that we will be starting negotiating with the support staff, because their contract is due to end on 6/30/22, on February 1st, I think, yes. So, I'm looking at my calendar. So, that's great, we're, you know, we're, we're still talking with the teachers and, and working through some, some language stuff, and I think we're, we're doing well, and, and I'm, I'm very pleased. That's all I have is an update. Ad hoc committee updates. Len?
Yeah, I can go first.
Yep.
Um, we haven't met recently, I'm still working on the survey based on the last conversations that we had, I'll get that updated, and I know everybody's busy with lots of meetings right now, and so, and it's going to get busier, just so you all know that. So, it's going to take me a while to put it together, and we'll move on from there.
Okay.
I'll let folks know when the next meeting is.
So, you don't have anything for the next, I was just adding stuff to the agenda, for agenda building, but, but you're not ready for that, for next
No.
Okay, okay, thanks. Matt?
I was supposed to have the first ad hoc committee meeting for the art display last Wednesday. I was forced to cancel it due to sudden illness, and I apologize. I will be emailing the committee members in the next day or so and rescheduling. We'll go from there.
Try it again.
Um, we have Finance. Liz.
Hi, everybody, and my internet is not happy either, so if my voice gets choppy, let me know, and I can turn off my video, that should preserve my audio. Sam, am I making that up, is that true?
Uh, that works. Yes, that does help
Okay.
Turning off video, it's easier to send audio than a bunch, you know, 30 pictures a second.
Right, okay. All right, good evening, everyone, we have the following pay orders and payroll for approval this evening. For pay orders, I have from the General Fund, a pay order in the amount of $293,915.61. Also, from the General Fund, we have a pay order in the amount of $12,610.38. From our after-school program, we have a pay order in the amount of $185.30. And from our lunch program, we have a pay order in the amount of $1,190.71, for a grand total of $307,902. From our student activity accounts from Mill River, we have one pay order in the amount of $892.95, and that's all we have from our student activity accounts. Next, I have payroll dated January 14th, in the amount of $576,819.36. And I do move that we accept and approve these pay orders and this payroll as presented.
Just a second. Thanks, Sam. Doug, are you still reviewing?
Yeah, actually, I look at every time.
Because we haven't asked you in a while.
Yeah, she's kind of quiet. The only thing I noticed, it was really cool to watch, because this actually shows the change of what we're going through right about now. The school picked up a, almost a case, it's going to be close to 280 of the masks that most of us are wearing, the white, the white ones here, the, where are we, the KN95s, really does a lot of good there, but probably for some of the staff, probably, and some of the students, the same thing. You got to keep them if they show up without one, and they need one, with this, best off that we have something extra special. So, I think it'll work good. Other than that, everything was fine, numbers were good, nothing really of any, any concern.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question? That's sort of indirect. Looking down the road, because we're going to have another, we're going to have two new Board Members come on, it would be, and, and Maria, I'll ask you, because I'm not sure, in that handbook for new Board Members, is there a description of the budget process in any way?
I think she had to leave.
Oh, okay. Well, my, I, I guess what I'd say in, in general is
Check with Liz.
Huh?
Check with Liz. She may know.
Who?
Liz.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that
Okay, so, my, my, the only thing I'd say, what I was saying, to, I'll shorten things up here, is that I think it would be helpful, and I think, and I'll speak for myself, as well, I'm not a member of the Finance Committee, I know I can go to the committee, and I can find out a lot more information, but I think it would be nice to put something together about the budget process, and I don't mean just a timeline, but some more specific meat, if, if you understand what I'm asking for, that folks, even I, would appreciate knowing about.
So, I actually have the handbook that Maria created, and what I will do is I will check the handbook, I will consult with Maria, and if there isn't anything, I will draft something in collaboration with other committee members and administrators who, you know, know far more than I do, and Stan, our business manager, and his office, they do a tremendous job. So, yes, Len, excellent idea.
Thank you.
We'll do that.
I did do a quick, like, find just of the word budget in the document, and there's a three-page at the end, the school tax and how it's created by Grant Reynolds is in there, as well as links to our policies on that, but I, it's a living document, and I don't think it would suffer from any additions and revisions, for sure.
And it might Sam, would you Looking at the Vermont School Boards Association, too, because they have a, a new Board Member sort of toolkit, and they also have an Essential Work of School Boards book that they usually send to all new Board Members, I don't know if
No.
They used to send it to everybody, but I don't know if they do, do it.
Yeah, you can access it, but I, I just think, you know, the budget's pretty important, and I, I think for, and again, I'm, I'm speaking for myself, to see the budget presented, and we have a relatively, I mean, I know the Finance Committee works hard at putting the budget together, I understand that, and, and speak, again, I'll speak for myself, I trust the members of the committee to, to put together the best budget that they can, with the input that they get from administration and staff, et cetera, but I just think it would be helpful to, to have an idea of how it's constructed and, and how it comes about. That's all.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, actually, I'm going to build off of that a little bit, but go a different direction. That document that Maria was so very, very kind to create and build on, and everybody else
Mm-hmm.
I'm wondering if we should officially review that document as a Board or as a Subcommittee prior to the election each year, and really just put that into our regular rotation?
That's a good idea.
You know, honestly, the Vermont School Board Association, we should really, rather than recreate the wheel, you know, they do such a good job of putting together resources, so I, I just want to caution us from taking on additional work that may have been done for us, if that makes sense.
And part of that process of review is to look at what might be there. I mean, I would almost say, if we can get our sheet down to one and saying, you're a new member, you really should look at this video, this, this bit, you know, this page, this page, and this page, because it's a lot to look at the V S B A, especially when you're not new to this.
There is, there is a whole set of, of information, though, for new Board Members
Yeah, and I'm wondering
That they can access, that is really wonderful, and, and we should make that available to, to, you know
Yeah.
Stress to new Board Members. In fact, I think there's even a set of, of, I'm not sure if it's webinars, but there's definitely classes, sort of, that they, they hold
Mm-hmm.
For new Board Members, and I don't know when exactly that is, but, how about I put it on the agenda for next meeting?
Bruce has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bruce, go ahead.
Yeah, I think we need to look, I saw some great school board websites, and all that material material is on their website. So there's no handbook to give out, there's no, in the election, in the state place, what you have to do to get on the ballot. All that's on the website.
Yep.
They're amazing.
Yep.
Yeah, and I get a booklet monthly. I don't know if other people do as well.
Yeah, there's, there's a, under Resources, there's a toolkit for, for new school board Members, and it goes, it has a number of, of what the essential work is, what the, you know, there's a video on, I guess, you know, all sorts of different issues. So I think, is anybody interested in having a conversation at the next meeting, or should we just, I mean, we really only have the February meetings.
Yep.
If we want to try and look at the...
I'd like, I'd like, so we haven't voted on...
Oh, they're, oh my gosh, they're on your Finance.
Right. So, I, can we, can we absolutely put this on?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, yes.
Sorry, Liz.
All good. No, 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 it's all good. I have to be honest. I'm really tired. Like, I, I'm good for two hours, two and a half hours, but...
Got it, Liz.
I just want to keep things moving.
Okay, okay. I, I will call the question, if no one has any other comments, on the actual members that Liz presented. It's not your fault, it's mine. I lost track. I apologize.
It's, it's, it's all good.
Okay, so I am calling the question that has already been asked and seconded, so...
Aye.
Your approval.
Yes, yeah.
All right, if you approve of, of the expenditure that Liz went through. Please raise your hand. Thank you, Asha. Okay, thank you. Now we can get back to getting off topic. So I'll get back...
Okay, I just, before, before I see the floor, our next Finance Committee meeting is, we meet on the fourth Monday of the month at 5:00 P. M. We are meeting on January 24th in a hybrid format.
And that is the time, Liz?
1:24, 5:00 P. M., hybrid format.
Okay. It was the 5:00 P. M. piece that I was missing. Thank you. Okay. All right. Then I will get back to the same question. Is anyone interested in putting anything on the agenda for, for next time about that, about the, the new Board Member, or do we want to take some time, maybe for the second meeting? Can everybody try and look at the materials that are out there?
Yeah, I think the second meeting's fine.
Maria had to leave, I'm assuming, I don't see her on the thing. Does anybody have a, do we have a digital version of her, of her handbook, Ann, that could be sent out?
I don't have it.
Okay, I'll make sure that I get it sent out to everybody and I'll send the, you know, a note about the V S B A, too. And we'll put it on the second agenda for February. Okay, now we're on transact other legal business. Does anybody have any that they would like to bring up?
Do we have the annual meeting that we need to clarify? We need to agree to?
We didn't, we already voted on the, the morning last meeting.
Yeah, last meeting, we did. We did last.
Yep, so I think we're good on that.
On the paper.
Yep. It's signed, I believe Crystal signed it, too.
Yep, yep.
And we're all set, it's been in the paper, because I saw it. So, so I think we're, we're fully warned. And if, so, anybody else? Then I will, if we don't need an executive session, which I don't think we do.
Yes, we do.
Oh, we do, I, that's what I was asking you, do we need it tonight?
Yes.
Okay. You had said, oh, no.
Oh.
Okay, so...
Sorry.
That's okay. So do we have any other agenda building items before we go, before we do the executive session piece?
I would just, again, because I know we took it off, but Board Goals and the bylaws.
Goals, bylaws, I, I think an update on the superintendent search.
Yep.
Which will just be on every agenda, I think, until we hire a new superintendent. Anything else that anybody can think of? Okay, I mean, Brian, you'll be doing the agenda, so we can... Okay. I don't know what the executive session is for, so I'll lead it to whoever is requesting it.
Has to do with contracts.
Okay.
So we need a specific finding that premature public knowledge would place the board at a substantial disadvantage.
Great. An executive sess, so I'll make a motion for executive session to discuss a contract matter that premature general public knowledge would clearly place the public body and person involved at a substantial disadvantage.
And then we also, so is, we need a vote on that, so does anybody?
B J. Seconded.
I seconded, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Could we, if you're in approval of, of going into executive session because of premature knowledge being disadvantageous. Okay? And then we also need a motion to actually go into executive.
I will make the motion that we go into executive session.
Okay. If you do that, please raise your hand if you're in favor of going into executive session. Then we have to figure out how we are going to do that.